Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, April 7th. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody is present except for Councilman Burgley. I'm assuming he's running late as always. Any public comment?
I would like to say something.
Can we hold it off for council community reports?
We can do that.
I appreciate it, sir. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
It's all moved.
Second?
I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilman Lundine and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. We'll move on to the approval of the city minutes.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the city minutes by Councilman Gordon and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Announcements, city office is closed Friday, April 10th, 2020, in observation of Good Friday.
Because it's not, because it's a virtual meeting, I need you to roll call on all these things. I apologize.
Yeah, that's my air too. I knew that. You know, I'm not used to this virtual stuff, so I forget that I have to do that. Gentlemen, we'll have to go singly down the line for our votes because we're on virtual like we did last meeting. Adopt the agenda was Lundine and Collison, Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
And myself as an aye, therefore it's four zero. Approval of the city council minutes was a motion by Councilman Gordon and a second by Councilman Collison. Councilman Lundine, your vote?
Aye.
And myself as an aye as well. Motion carries four zero. Continuing with the city announcements, I'll say it again, the city offices are closed Friday, April 10th, in observation of Good Friday. There is a committee of a whole meeting Tuesday, April 21st at 5:00 PM. A city council meeting Tuesday, April 21st at 7:00 PM. And a planning commission meeting will immediately follow that council meeting, April 21st. Council committee reports, go ahead, Mr. Collison.
Yeah, I'd just like to apologize for my absence. I was taking care of some health, health issues and I'm glad to be back. Just wanted to apologize to everybody in the public about my absence. That's all.
We're good to have you back, Councilman Collison.
Glad to have you back.
Glad to have you back. I do have some too, maybe a little discussion for the council. Because we're all in this quarantine, there's some questionable dates. I'd like to run by the council, see what your opinion is. We do have May 9th, which is the city cleanup. My question would be, I myself feel like we should keep it, but I'm wondering what you gentlemen are thinking.
What, what are the times again on that? It's on a Saturday, correct?
It is a Saturday from 8:00 AM to noon. And we did move this date back from previous years, it was a little earlier, but we want it to be after the citywide clean, or citywide garage sales. However, we did get notification from Mrs. Christensen yesterday that they are not doing the citywide garage sale. Not sure if that impacts the date now for this year, but I've never, haven't been told if they're going to try to reschedule that or not.
I think what happened was they didn't get sponsorship. Normally somebody sponsors them, that didn't this year. So they were looking for other sponsorship, didn't get it, so now they're wanting to cancel, plus our pandemic. I plan on having a garage sale with or without them, so.
I think the citywide cleanup, we could still manage to have it. People are just pulling in with their cars, I don't know if we, just spitballing, would we have public works employees available to unload for them?
Ms. Wood and I thought was as if they could just pull in and one person, because normally they would check IDs as Ms. Wood stated. No?
That's for the compo site.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, for the cleanup day, we do have two public works people who do work that event. Typically is to help unload things because they're heavy for people.
Yeah.
And then take payment. We do ask that people prepay, but that doesn't always happen, so usually we do take money there.
Check their cash.
Now, if we wanted to continue that, I would make sure that our public works had gloves on, rubber gloves.
Some hand sanitizer gloves?
Regardless if they prepaid, you'd still want gloves on just because you're touching their objects.
Yeah.
Right.
I'd say give them some latex gloves, some hand sanitizer and let them go. Maybe some mask if they want it, whatever they want.
If they're comfortable doing it, I, you know, I guess that'd be my biggest concern, if the employees are comfortable in still doing it.
If the governor's order hypothetically gets extended out to that date, which is quite a ways out, but if it did, for a stay-at-home order, then we would cancel. But if there, if there is not a stay-at-home order, I think that I agree with your recommendation, which is to, to keep it.
With the warm weather, a lot of people have been cleaning, especially since they've been home.
Yeah, I know I'm one of them. Any thought on this, Councilman Lundine or Councilman Gordon?
I'd say as long as the staff is okay with it, if they feel comfortable. I mean, it's obviously it's up to them anyway, I mean, they gotta work. And I guess it all depends on stay-at-home order. I mean, as right now, the rumbling is the end of April, so if that's the case as of right now, that would be well past that, at that point.
That has, well, the current stay-at-home is supposed to expire Friday, but I'm assuming the governor's gonna extend that. But we'll see what he does from today until Friday. Councilman Gordon with the hydraulic chair, you have.
Trying to get it to stop rocking. My other one all set up, but.
Any comment or concern?
No, I think that sounds good. I think, I think that, you know, if we have to move it back later, we can, we'll probably know more at the next meeting. If we have to move it back, we'll have to move it back, but for right now, we might as well move forward with it, so.
Fair enough. The next one would be the compost site, which is April 21st. I've had a lot of people reaching out on me on this one. When does it open? Are we still gonna do it?
I would treat that the same way.
I concur.
Most of the time.
People are at home doing yard work because they're out of work. At least they're being physical, physically active, and if we can help with that by having them help, you know, with their gardens and stuff.
You know, and then usually that guy's in his little booth and he wants to see proof of address.
Yeah, but even if that, Ms. Wood and I were talking about proof of address, if they just hold the ID, he doesn't necessarily have to take it.
Touch it.
Yeah, he can just confirm their address and let it go.
I would say that there is usually, I mean, if we do eliminate that part of it with the license, driver's license, there isn't really any interaction. People do unload it themselves. He just ensures that they've taken their trash with them if he sees that they left their blades or something. But I have heard of some other cities already canceling theirs and they're getting a lot of pushback from their residents because they have no place to take their yard waste.
Right.
So while I understand, I think we could minimize the risk and keep that open, keep more than six feet distance and, and keep ours open as long as there's not a stay-at-home order.
And I think if he's, whoever's in the booth, they should wear a mask and a glove.
We only have one person who will be working, so the booth would only be, it wouldn't be like multiple staff members are changing hands in the booth. It's only one person, so we minimize that way too.
Yeah, and he can stay six feet away from the car and just say, just hold the ID.
I still think for safety's sake, if he can wear a mask, it's, you know, the best thing for him.
We'll keep that one as well. The last thing I wanted to run by you guys, I've gotten text messages, phone calls, emails, instant messages via Facebook. This one's huge. Your thoughts on closing of the parks?
Absolutely not.
Playground.
Like, well, it would be, you're gonna close the playground, you're closing the park. Either way, it's the same thing.
There's been a few cities that have done it and they've gotten a lot of grief about doing that. We gotta trust that our residents, I believe that they're gonna keep their distance from other people visiting the parks as well. I think to close them down and, I don't know, I think it'd be a bad decision.
You know, you got, you got.
That's my opinion.
I'm with you.
I, I think you got a third of the people wanna close it, a third of them don't want it closed, and a third that don't care.
You know, I've, actually I've seen more people out on their bikes and walking than I have seen them in the parks.
I would, I would agree with that as well. I've seen a lot of people biking and walking.
I do wanna share, just for clarification for who's ever listening to this, is the governor's order has maintained all parks and trails to be open. And I have called almost daily to make sure that that has included the playground equipment, that that hasn't changed. And the governor's order states that is up to the local jurisdictions on what they wanna do with playground equipment. There is no order to close them. I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Maybe if, if your children are at the park, maybe bring, bear gloves to wear, you know, winter gloves or whatever you might have that your kids.
Did we, did we post that on our Facebook?
So we posted something from the National Park and Rec site, which I know that many cities have posted that are keeping theirs open, which is maintaining social distancing, washing hands frequently, things like that. We do actually, maybe even as soon as tomorrow, have signs going up in our parks that say something very similar. Please, please don't use the park if you're showing, or if you're sick. Wash your hands regularly, and a lot of cities that aren't closing them are putting up these signs just for more awareness because not everyone's on social media, so we're trying to make sure people are aware.
Can you maybe add to that, just, I mean, even if you have to do a magic marker or something, you know, wear gloves if feasible, you know? Just for the kids that are on the, you know, touching stuff.
I look at it this way, you get, you get some young kids that are out there, young, young and kids, you know, I'm, you know, you get to be a teenager, you know, parents are gonna let them go do their own thing, whatever, but you get some young kids out there and if the parents aren't there with them, why would they care at this point? I mean, they, they obviously don't care if they're letting those little kids run out there, you know? So that's shame on them. You know, this whole stay-at-home order is more of you using your own judgment and then pushing the state, you know, the six-foot barrier, you know, right down the line. But a lot of the stay-at-home order is pretty much your own common sense. And it's just gotta be a point where somebody starts being accountable for their own common sense. So I, I'm against closing the parks. I think there's some parents that, you know, they're, they're stuck at home because they can't go to work because they're not working. They have their kids at home with them. They're going stir crazy. We can end up with more mental health issues than anything by shutting off that vent.
I agree. I mean, I think I saw yesterday Minnesota has the lowest infection rate by population, right? You know, I mean, as, as far as a rate, so in the whole country. I mean, we're, we're doing the best with that, so, you know, I think, I think if people don't wanna go to the park, they don't have to. There's no reason for us to close them.
I do, I do gotta say, I was listening to a local radio station this morning and they took a poll on when this was all over with, how, what percentage would stay home and what percentage would run out to their favorite restaurant immediately. And crazy enough, it was like fifty, was it like fifty-seven percent said they were gonna stay home? So, I mean, it doesn't shock me. To me, it's, Minnesotans are pretty smart in the fact to where they, they use their common sense. They, they practice their common sense and as long as they keep doing it, we'll keep that, that rate low and, and don't let. I mean, my wife took my kids and I have a six and a one-year-old, she took them to the park, they played for two hours, came home and she bathed them immediately. They're fine.
You know, the president stated that if we don't get this, you know, people out, being out again, socializing, you know, suicide rate's gonna go up. And I.
Domestic violence rate is gonna go up.
Yeah.
I mean, there's things that are gonna go up that if we've never would have dreamt of.
You can't even ground your kid right now, you know?
Right.
You gotta come up with other.
You're grounded. You gotta stay in. Wait. Yeah. So I'm getting the, the feel that closing the playgrounds would be a no as well. All right, I just, I, I've gotten, I'm telling you, I've gotten some pretty rude messages that this council needed to do its due diligence and close those parks.
I've got opposite messages.
Yeah, I.
That opposite of people hoping that we don't.
Oh, I, I've gotten a fifty-fifty, believe me, but the, the few that have came in that wanted us to close were pretty rude and they were so rude, it outweighed the, the other half that wanted to keep them open. I, maybe, I don't know, I focused on the rude and that's, I, maybe I shouldn't be that way, but.
Like I said, a third, a third of the people are gonna say close them, a third of them's gonna say leave them open, and the other third doesn't care either way. And, and I'll be honest with you, you, like, like I said, you have to, sometime you have to become accountable for your own actions. And if you can't police your children enough, if you're so worried about it, then don't go to the parks. Nobody's telling you you have to go there. You know, and then the other half should be more consistent on, you know, being their due diligence and getting their hands sanitized or putting some gloves on their kids or, you know, keeping their social distancing. So I, I, I'm, I'm not gonna make that call for people.
I concur. I concur. Well, good, I'm, I'm glad we're all on the same page. Any, any other council, that's all I had for you fellows, any other council community reports you have to share?
I was at the last fire district meeting, that was about five minutes long. Basically, it was pay bills and everything is kind of on hold. We just have to do the monthly businesses and that's it, and that's all they're going to do right now. We still gain nowhere with Athens, not Athens. Oxford.
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 Did, Ms. Wood, did you?
Can I comment on something with the fire district? So just let council know a little update because, you know, I've been working on the lease and having you mentioned about what the joint powers agreement is in that stalemate with that one township, so it sounds, that it likely may not pass. So I'm working with Chief Jankovic to amend the joint powers agreement, which is what our city attorney has recommended for that lease language. Because what it states in the JPA for lease contradicts what our lease agreement says. So something has to be, whether if we just amended our lease, it still contradicts the JPA. So I'm working with him to get him some language, so you likely will be seeing that come through on one of your board meetings that to get that lease through what we charge them change, it will be in that joint powers agreement, just for an update.
So that we can possibly use that and leverage the other way around, getting this. It's, it, it's, it's not, it's not a dead, dead, dead issue. It's, it's like walking into a door. Until somebody opens that door, you're gonna keep banging your head on it. And this one gentleman in Ox, Oxlip is, he's being very belligerent on it and he's not understanding what that joint powers agreement's all about. So Arvid from Spencer Brook is going over there, talk to him again and deal with it one more time, trying to, to move on. So it's, what it comes down to is the fire district is charging a call rate for a fire call. Okay, so if it's over eight hours, they charge so much per DNR schedule rate. So he's saying, no, we pay for fire protection through the fire district, we shouldn't have to pay for anything.
Anything further.
Any further than that. So, but then he said, well, if you make it ten hours instead of eight, he's.
That's more acceptable.
It's more acceptable, but the whole problem is, is the one fire that brought this all up, the guy isn't going to pay for it, which a previous council member brought it up and stirred this all up earlier before he resigned. And he, it, those two, this guy that's on Oxford Township's board is a good friend of this gentleman that had the fire.
It's pretty much given them a leg to stand on as far as charging.
Yep.
Period.
But he's, he's thinking that it's changing the joint powers agreement to the fact that they don't have their vote anymore. And it's, and it has nothing to do with that. It is just for the fire district to charge a $250 fee? They've done it since day one, always have done it. But it's not in the language. That's all I'm gonna elaborate on that. I'm not gonna say anymore on that or not. So, and that's what we're trying to get changed, and he's, that's another issue. We have to get this issue figured first, then we can discuss that one. That's a, he's two steps ahead and not thinking what's in front of him at the moment.
Anything else? All right, let's move on to business items. K1 is ordinance amendment to City Code Chapter 160, the fees. My understanding is because our attorney looked at this, we didn't want this as a resolution, we wanted this as an ordinance, correct, Ms. Wood?
That is correct, Mayor and Council. So we are repealing in its entirety City Code Chapter 160. 160 had all the items of things that we did charge a fee for, however, it did not contain the fee. The fee was always approved annually by council by resolution. The attorney has recommended that that is not best practice. So what we're doing is we're repealing that Chapter 160 out and then we will have a standalone ordinance that will include all of the things that we charge, including the fees. So that's what you have before you and also, as we discussed at committee of the whole, it includes food truck fees. Otherwise, every other fee remain the same.
Better look at that one there, Councilman Gordon.
Well, I think we, we discussed what that fee was gonna be already, so.
Yeah, I think we already did that.
We did. Yeah, it was, it was pretty reasonable and if nothing else is changing, I'd.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Lundine and a second by Councilman Gordon. Also, I have to ask Councilman Collison. Well, actually.
All of us.
We can say all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Dan Collison.
Somebody, it sounded like somebody said aye on the phone.
That must be Mr. Burgley.
Is that you, Councilman Burgley? Oh, look at that, Councilman Burgley is now present via telephone. Councilman Burgley, you did say aye, sir? Councilman Gordon, you seconded, Councilman Lundine made the motion, Councilman Collison?
He said aye, yep.
Aye and myself as an aye, therefore that passes five zero. K2 is the ordinance repelling and replacing Chapter 233 pond shops. Ms. Wood, you'll have to explain this one because to me, this one's a little crazy.
All right, Mayor and Council, so our pond shop ordinance has been completely reviewed by our city attorney, just one of many. However, why this one was real important is our city, our, the city code had actually listed specifically what type of automated pond system our pond shop was to use and what the city utilized. Well, what had happened is we utilized a, I'm just gonna call it like a software that was used by the Minneapolis Police Department. Well, that's no longer supported. So it basically made our, our city code obsolete because it actually named it by name. So now it's been generalized, it's just calling it an automated pond system, doesn't actually have the name in there. So that's been updated to make sure that we're in compliance with state law and for what's available.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundine and a second by Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Dan Collison.
Councilman Burgley is an aye, Councilman Collison is an aye, Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Lundine is an aye, myself is an aye as well. Motion carries five zero. K3, the amendment to the development agreement for legacy pines, Phase 1. Ms. Wood?
All right, we have a development agreement here. It's an amendment for Phase 1, which is complete. And the development agreement is with Odyssey Homes. And they are looking to, they have requested to assign the agreement to Evergreen Everpine Land Holdings LLC. And also they have requested, because the development is complete, per the development agreement, we have 10% and they are requesting to have a warranty bond in place of the letter of credit, which we have reviewed with the city attorney and city engineer. And the money that we are holding is sufficient, we can release that and then get a warranty bond for the exact amount.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundine.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Collison, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Councilman Burgley is an aye, Councilman Collison, I heard the aye, Councilman Gordon, I heard the aye. Councilman Lundine is an aye and myself is an aye, motion carries five zero. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
I just had one quick question on this one.
Oh, hold on, we got a question there, Councilman Burgley, go ahead, Councilman Gordon?
The fireworks, when we first talked about that, I think that was like 13,000 we estimated when we first discussed it, right? And it's down to six now, so I think that's pretty, pretty reasonable. I'm glad to see that we saved some money there, but on that, I don't, I think they're planning on still moving forward with the rodeo and everything, but I know like North Branch had canceled their, is what I heard, anyway, that they had canceled their summer days or whatever it's called. But when do we have to actually buy that, those fireworks? I mean, do we have to commit to that without knowing for sure if we're gonna have that going on and stuff at that time, or?
Ms. Wood, do you have that answer?
I believe in their contract, they do state weather-related postponement and cancellation. And let me just briefly look it over. In the event of a postponement of the fireworks display, customer shall be responsible for payment based on the schedule below, which shall be due within 30 days of the date agreed in, to, in Section 1. If the customer does not reschedule the fireworks display within 12-month period, an additional 30% of the contract price shall be due from the customer for damages, excuse me, and expenses relating to the cancellation. If customer chooses to postpone or cancel the fireworks display for any reason, customer shall be responsible for payment of the contract pace, price based on the schedule below, which shall be due within 15 days of the agreed to date in Section 1. In the case of postponement or cancellation, customer shall pay an additional fee, the following percentage of the contract price. So here are the three conditions. At any time prior to the scheduled date of the fireworks display, 5% of the contract price. At any time on the scheduled, on the scheduled date of the fireworks display, 20% of the contract price. After the commitment of the fireworks display where pyrotechnics operator has not determined that the postponement is necessary for weather or weather-related circumstances, 100% of the contracted price. So I read that to be, is if we, if we were canceling or postponing, anytime prior to the scheduled date of the fireworks display, we're paying 5% of 6,000.
Okay.
And I'm wondering in a situation like this too, if this, if the pandemic pushes, oh, they're not gonna be able to even show up. They shouldn't be allowed to even, you know, so I, I guess I would have to maybe see if there's something in the clause about that because this is unusual circumstances.
We'd have to reach out to them to get their, their thoughts.
But I mean, even at 5%, that's.
Even if the rodeo didn't go on, people can watch fireworks still, I mean.
Practicing their social distances, you got that right.
The one thing that we could do, Mayor and Council, is perhaps hold off on executing this agreement for a little bit. I mean, council can approve it if staff's determined that we're going to move forward with summary events. Maybe give it a little bit before we sign this and submit it. That's a possibility. I know that I've heard some cities are canceling some summary events. Maybe we wanna go through the month of April before we sign this.
We could give you approval and if we decide at that point, you know, like I look at it, you can wait till, till we have.
I mean, I don't see anything in here that, I, I did not have the conversations with them, but I would imagine if we were to book them, say in May, that maybe they would still be available.
Wasn't the rodeo the first week of July, right?
Right, July 9th is, it's on the day of that Thursday of the parade, which I haven't heard from the chamber if the parade's happening yet either.
I know the rodeo, as far as we know right now, they said to keep moving forward with planning it and, and all that kinda stuff, so there's no plans right now to change anything with that. But, you know, I mean, things could change too, so.
And that, I mean, it may, the rodeo may, it might, may be the actual rodeo that cancels, not you guys. The.
Oh, yeah, right.
You know, they're.
Yeah, the association that runs that, yeah.
Well, let's keep our fingers crossed. I say we, we approve it. And then if something changes, then we approve it without the signature and then if something changes, then we, we don't sign it. We discuss things further with them, but if all goes well and, and I'm praying and hoping to God this is done by, by May, then, then we'll be in the clear.
Sounds good to me.
It was.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? With that, I had a motion to approve.
Second, my friend.
By Councilman Collison and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, Steve Lundine.
Aye.
Aye, Paul Burgley.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
I say aye.
I say aye.
Councilman Gordon says aye, Councilman Collison says aye, and myself says aye, so the motion carries five zero.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Lundine.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Steve Lundine, aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
Paul Burgley, aye.
And myself, Jeff Johnson, aye. Therefore, we stand adjourned.